All right.
Go ahead, boss.
Okay, I'd like to call the order, the regular meeting of the Joint Plan and Variance Commission at 6:00 PM on, what is it, December thirteenth?
Yep. I second. What should we second this?
Oh, you just called over here.
Yeah, I just called over here. All right, I'll take ten yes.
You will call.
Hey, your friends are absent. Sandy Kaywood, here. Shannon Lane?
Here.
Bob Lane?
Here.
Lori Rafferty?
Here.
Julie Mizak? Absent. I guess she told me that. Mayor Protim, Trevor Smith, absent. John Miss Trater, Kim Boyd? Yeah, she says, we can't hear you.
She not. She don't want to.
Attorney Ruth Born is present. And I am present. Ta-da. Okay.
All right. Well, no public comments tonight, right? Okay.
Too cold out there.
Uh, well, we need to approve the agenda from last week, right?
Nope, the agenda in front of you.
Oh, well, it says approve.
You're on the, you're on the.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I see. Okay, approval, okay, approval of minutes from November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three?
You have to approve.
You gotta approve the agenda first.
I approve the agenda.
Yeah.
No, you make a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second. Yay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Aye.
Now you can do your approval of your own.
Okay, now we need approval of the minutes from November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
So is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
Hold on just a second. Can I just ask that we make a slight revision to letter A under new business? To reflect Albert County Historical Society and Museum, Estidakayo Museum and Historical Society?
Oh, yeah. You got it. Albert County. Okay.
That's it.
With amendment.
Thought, I'm sorry.
No, you good.
Okay, so we have the approval of the minutes from November twenty ninth, correct?
Yes, yes, with the amendment.
All right, well, so now we're on to new business?
It's.
Right?
Yep, so Ruth gets to take over.
Here, Ruth, here we go.
So, tonight's meeting, we're gonna go through the table of contents and everything that is behind each one that's labeled. Everything we have reviewed and discussed and reviewed again and discussed. The primary purpose of tonight is to start to look at the format and how that works in terms of, does it make sense where it's located and, if anybody wants to move these articles around, because we're getting ready to start to submit this moving forward and to start to see how it flows and get your comments. So it should be a little easier meeting tonight, less substance, more form. And you're gonna have to bear with me because my office printer and scanner is broken. The guy came today and can't fix it, so I have to just refer to the screen um, because I try not to print all this stuff out for every meeting. So, here we go. So everybody has a table of contents and everybody in front of them?
Yep.
So the first, Article One is definitions. Those are all the definitions of the zoning code. There's over a hundred definitions now in our code. Article Two is the zoning map and setting forth that the town now has a zoning map and to refer to that. Article Three is our zoning map amendment, so that would say, like what we just uh, did last night as we amended the zoning map to reflect a change in zoning. And this would be the process? And if anybody wants to review this, uh, you know, maybe that wouldn't hurt us. This is gonna be such pain. Um, let's see. Because I don't think we've talked about the zoning amendment very well. And this is something that staff, we keep uh, running up our heads against us, butting our heads. So Article Three Amendments to Zoning Code and Official Zoning Map. Most of this, Kim, is not changed. I guess council needs to be changed. It's good we'll have the updated comprehensive plan to match our zoning, which is a big deal. And you'll note that the proposed zoning map will be made available for public inspection in the town hall during regular business hours. So we don't have to post it all over the place. We just have to have it available for the public to view. I think. And then the submittal requirements, which are rather lengthy, which would actually uh, helped. Also, this provision now provides for notice to adjacent property owners. I don't know how, within three hundred feet. I don't know how everyone feels about that. Uh, that certainly makes sense. Does anybody?
You're on, um, you're on Article Two, number, um, F.
Article Three. For the amendments.
Top of the page.
Yeah, so F.
Okay, thank you.
She's relatively quick.
She's like speeding through this.
Okay, go ahead, Ruth.
So I wanna know what, if anybody has any objection, because so all these things end up falling on, not even me, staff. So this is notice to all the property owners within three hundred feet.
Is that pretty standard?
Yeah, that.
Before it was five hundred, so three hundred is less, which is okay.
Well, for example, if they did the museum and they had to have five hundred feet, they'd probably have to go clear down to almost head of this little convenience store.
Oh, wow, okay.
So that would pretty much be the whole town.
Okay, thank you for the.
Because three hundred feet's the length of a football field, hundred yards.
I mean, three hundred feet is pretty standard. I thought five hundred feet was ridiculous.
Okay.
Kimberly, what do you think?
She's muted.
I think five hundred feet.
What did she say?
You think five hundred?
Is it, wait, is that what we're, we're saying? I'm sorry, I'm doing two things at one time. Is that um, what we're saying they need to do a circumference around for notifications?
Yes, and right now it's five hundred and we're looking at moving it to three hundred.
I think three hundred is more appropriate, to be honest with you.
Yeah, okay, good, because that's what I think.
I think it's creating too much work for people.
Okay, so the, the, so the museum, they have to let, so everybody within three hundred feet know, has to know what the museum's up to, right? Is what this is saying?
Yeah, any public, isn't it public notice area?
Yes, so like when we were doing the museum school rezoning, thing we've been dealing with the last couple of months, is yes, so they had to send out a mailer to everybody within the five hundred radius to let them know.
Okay, so now we're gonna change it to three hundred.
Because five hundred is pretty impressive.
Like the bank, does the bank, does the bank do the same thing? Does anybody who builds a business?
The bank has, they're the same thing.
They have to do the same thing.
Everybody does.
Yep, if you're planning to make changes, you got to let people know.
Okay. All right.
I'm fine with three hundred.
Yeah, go ahead, Ruth.
So this also requires mineral interest. I don't know, I don't believe that's necessary. What do you guys think? And Gassley says, we don't even have that in town as far as I know anywhere, do we?
No, not that I know.
County, but it's not in Kailua.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that out. Because I don't think we reviewed this last meeting, that's why we're doing this now.
That would be an under G. By the way, this is Terry. I have to sign in over my company. Let me sign in personally, so.
Can you um, make it louder? Your volume, I can barely hear you.
Oh, that was Terry. She's on your Buffalo.
They're trying to figure who that was.
Okay, go ahead and zip, Ruth.
Sorry.
She's lost.
No, I'm not lost, I'm just. So zoning map amendments, then next is our zoning districts. We've gone through that, how we have created new zone districts in the town. And so, heavy industrial, mobile home park district, single family, high density, medium density, agricultural. And then next we have our development standards. So that talks about our minimum lot area, our building height, starts with non-residential setbacks, and then it goes to our residential development standards. We also now have multifamily requirements, setbacks, development standards for mobile home parks. And then we go to our table of uses that we have gone through in terms of a special review use or permitted use. It's pretty extensive now. Same with our residential zone districts. And then next, I put in our parking requirements, so that would flow from our development standards. We have uh, dimension requirements now for parking stalls, which we did not have before. And then a requirement for accessible parking spaces. Am I going too fast? Because I think, I'm hoping you guys are with me, because it should follow everything we have. Okay, so that's the end of part one zoning in your packet. And that takes us through Article Seven. So we just went through Article One through Seven and finished with our parking requirements. Now we're on part two, which is gonna take me a minute to get. Okay, so part two is planned unit development. It's much more specific than what we've had historically. And if, you know, Kiowa Creek Meadows or a big project comes back and submits, I think we have a much more structured plan and requirements for submittal. Uh, we set forth the process, submittal requirements from sketch plan to preliminary plan to final plan for a PUD. And next, we have annexations. We have a process now for annexations. And then next we have vested property rights provision that complies with state law. I kept in the requirement that actually was what we were able to hang our hat on with Kiowa Creek Meadows is, on the last sheet, section sixteen dash two twenty-six, notice that it's the applicant's responsibility to comply with publication following approval. This was actually the demise of Kiowa Creek Meadows Development Plan. I mean, that really put the nail in the coffin of the validity, because they didn't do um, any publication. And that burden in that case was not the town, it was the applicant. So I don't think we should get away, delete that provision since it was so helpful to us last time around. So now we're on part three, if you all are, I don't know how you're, what you're looking at, but hopefully I've laid it out so much easier for everybody. So part three is our accessory units, and this is where home occupations are. I'm hoping it works there. If anybody has anything to say, I'm still struggling with this. So accessory use is being home occupations. And then you see in the green fences, I cannot come up with a good place to put our fencing requirements. Does anybody have an opinion about that?
No, but I have a quick, quick question on number nine. Does that mean you cannot be left sitting out in the street from seven AM to seven PM or after seven PM?
I don't know what number you, what you're referencing.
Number nine under home occupations.
Oh.
I understand that the green line, would that was for?
Uh, the green, so whenever you see green, that means that it's still unresolved, because we talked about, um, AM to six PM too. So do you wanna rephrase your question? Because I'm not, sorry.
Just curious, what, I'm, um.
So you know, the, this is designed for, so let's say your next door neighbor has a
A great truck.
Uh, you know, a truck, you know, he, he does excavating and he has a big dump truck and he starts his vehicle up because it's diesel at seven in the morning to warm his truck up. And he just lets it idle while he goes and has coffee and eats, and then he goes back out.
Yeah, can't idle before, can't sit, it can't start and go, but can't.
Okay.
That's actually state law.
All the truckers that park at the park.
Yeah, this pertains to. And everything. Okay.
Got it. Kim, you were saying something?
Oh, it's actually state law. It's called parking. You can't do that. You can't let it sit out there and idle, leave the vehicle unattended.
Yeah. Like on state law, state highways and stuff. I think federal highways, like exits and stuff. But as long as everybody's, it's highlighted to make sure everybody's okay with those times.
Okay, perfect. And I like fences, I mean, I like fences where it's at.
You do? Oh, good, okay.
Because we're trying to think of, if someone's trying to look about a fence, what's the easiest place for them to find it, right? In the streets. I think that makes sense.
Um, ADUs we spoke about a lot um, at our last meeting and I wanna make sure that everybody's still on that same page, that we're gonna permit accessory dwelling units.
And can we?
No, I'm not on that page.
Because I don't think we really resolved it, you guys. I mean, I thought we exhausted the conversation, but I'm not sure we resolved it.
You think about there's some lots in town that maybe you could do that, divide them into them, put another house on or something, but there's a lot of lots in town that are too small.
Well.
That wouldn't accommodate something like that.
Well, then they're restricted from getting it, because they have to comply with the other development standards, like setbacks and height and so on and so forth. I mean, all this is really talking about is the ability to create it, but you still can be prevented from having that unit built on your lot, because the lot is too small.
Yeah. Well, you think about it, the little house that we have in town sold for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And I've been asked by two people, well, can I build a tiny home behind my house, behind my business, so I can sell that? And so that would, in essence, be the ADU headache that we could open up, that can of worms.
That's why we have a variance.
We can't understand what you're saying. Say it again.
I said, that's why we have the variance process, though, for items that don't meet conformity. But I think when we had the conversation before, you guys were settling on a certain size lot would allow, you put it in a category, if I'm saying this right, where you had to have a certain size lot to qualify for it, but anybody can ask for a variance on it. You guys just, you know, would take into consideration and deny it, you know? But anything that doesn't conform to our code, people can ask for a variance on, for you to review.
Which I don't think that an accessory dwelling unit ever rises to a level of a hardship, which is what a variance is, so.
Yeah.
They can't exceed eight hundred square feet, which I guess is what a little house is, right?
Yeah, I think that's what Debbie's was, wasn't it, Ruth?
Yeah, yeah.
Mine's under eight hundred. It's considered a tiny house. In my, it's tiny.
Do you have a basement?
My kids are getting bigger, my house is shrinking. Yeah, we have a basement. It's not, it's just basically storage, because it's not, um.
Living space.
Correct. Our stove and stuff's down there, but that's it. Washer and dryer.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not habitable space.
Yeah, they play their games down there, but they don't sleep down there. Only because I can't stand listening.
So anyway, we need to set parameters for the size of lot you have to have to do that. So I would think we would. That's my opinion.
I, I think we have, so it says ADUs are not permitted on lots smaller than six hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay.
So we determine, you know, sixty-five hundred square feet. Uh, what do you have, a lot of lots that are what, a hundred by? Fifty? I don't know. Old mining lots are fifty by a hundred. So they were five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Say there's gotta be some of those, some of those little thin stripy things.
Yeah.
That way.
Okay, well, let's not get bogged down there. Let's keep.
No, but I have a question, though. Can we go back to home occup- occupations or occupants here? Real quick, number eleven.
Yeah.
Washing of vehicles or heavy machinery is not permitted. Does that mean you can't wash your own car? Know what that means? Right? Single family.
Are you planning to wash a dump truck out in front of your house?
Well, no, it says washing of vehicles or heavy machinery. So washing of vehicles.
Oh.
That doesn't imply cars.
Right, that's true. So you would have to take passenger vehicles out.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's in actually both of them. It's in A for single family, medium family, residential and agricultural, so.
So should it say?
I think you wanna restrict that in agricultural, rural residential. I think you wanna delete that, right?
Do we want people washing heavy machinery in their, at their house?
Most of them won't, because they're covered in grease and oil. It's gonna just ruin what they have, I wouldn't think. I mean, I take my grease and oil down to that car wash, because that's what it's for.
I just don't, I, I mean, I, I think that's getting a little too, I mean, washing of your own vehicle, I mean.
Well, do you want the whole thing removed? I think that's what she's asking.
No, I don't, I don't think you should be washing big, heavy equipment and rigs and stuff like that.
So just take out the car part and or excluding passenger vehicle.
Yeah, so either take out the car part or say excluding passenger vehicles.
I mean, who doesn't like washing their vehicle on a hot summer afternoon?
Oh, I love it. My kids all do it.
I like it. I like doing that. So I don't know, I just, I, I hate to be petty, but.
No, I agree with you.
No?
It's fine.
Needs to be right. This is the time to make it right.
Take it out.
Or leave.
All thing are washing of heavy machinery.
Yeah, leave that in there.
They want the heavy machinery left. They want the part about cars. So if someone wants to go wash their car out front, it's fine. They don't want them washing their.
Your vehicle.
Washing of heavy machinery is not permitted.
Yeah, so basically washing of heavy machinery is a no.
Heavy machinery or, or how do you semi, how do you word that? I mean, heavy machinery, okay, so they're gonna be like, so I can't wash my witch ditch here, but I can wash my semi, right?
Oh, so.
You didn't specify semi, you just said heavy machinery.
So we should say.
So vehicles and heavy machinery excluding, because then that would take vehicles like work vehicles, but excluding.
I would just say washing of heavy machinery is prohibited.
What about your businesses, like who motors and the tractor?
Those are little vehicles, so those are passenger vehicles. At who motors.
Yeah, but what about over here at the trailer place?
Hey, Ruth, yeah. Okay, so the section Todd's referring to on page, the page before it, those are listed under B properties within IC, MD or MF zone districts. What are those?
Industrial, commercial, medium density, multifamily.
Okay.
I think it's the same thing, you guys, like you just make it consistent, that, you know, washing of heavy machinery is not permitted.
What is, what is no advertising display or other indications of home occupation on the premises? What does that mean?
You can't have a house that has a big sign in the window that says, um, Joe's Trucking Service.
Okay. Well, then, and I'm not trying to be petty either, Todd, okay? But I'm, I'm trying to think outside the box. The next one underneath it, there should be no onsite retail sales. What about people with home-based businesses?
Yeah, it's not retail. They can't be selling retail out of their house, or they shouldn't be. The purpose of home occupi- patients essentially is to be providing professional services. I mean, if you guys wanna change that, we can, but I, I can't think, like, what would a retail business out of a home? I I can't think, like, what would a retail business out of a home look like be?
Maybe. We're thinking. Would online sales be included in that?
I can't hear. I can't hear clearly what, what?
I'm thinking about Pampered Chef, Mary Kay, things of that nature. And I'm only, I mean, I know those are common home-based businesses, but we really do get petty people that call into the office or come into the office. They get a a itch about their neighbor. They don't like them. Then they're gonna be on them all the time about stupid crap, and they're gonna be complaining in their office all the time about stupid crap. And when I look at onsite retail sales, I think about home-based businesses like Pampered Chef or Mary Kay or things like that, and somebody who has the ability to read this code or dive into it and find that could use that against retail sales such as that.
Okay, so Pampered Chef, I'm guessing is like a a residential home that does catering?
No, they sell.
So.
Uh, supplies, baking kitchen supplies, kitchen supplies, whether it's ingredients or it's baking pans or utensils. Yeah, things of that nature.
It's the new updated Tupperware.
Yeah.
Yes. It's also like.
Did she sell it? Did she sell it from her house?
Yeah. It's a book sale. You can book sale it. You, a lot of those though, Kim, they they mail them directly to the person, so they don't. They sell it by the book out of their house, but it's shipped to their house.
Yeah, but like like I I agree with Kim. I mean, like.
Why do you do?
I I agree too.
Yeah, that needs to be revised because I'm I'm, I don't want to hurt the little person trying to make a buck and.
Yeah, what's it to us?
Selling Mary Kay and all that. I mean, I'm all for a little business to begin with.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and Kim's right. I mean, they're they're gonna find that little code in there and they're gonna be like, oh, I don't like that neighbor, so I'm gonna pick on them until they do something about it.
And you'd have to do something then because it's written down.
Because it's written down. Next thing you know, this this person's losing their only income or part of their income because.
Yeah, we need to take.
Okay, so let's talk about this. Home occupations are designed to be like you have a professional business, like you're an accountant, bookkeeper, something like that. And it's really not designed to be retail in the sense that people are coming to your house in your transacting business because the goal of a home occupation is to allow somebody to have a home-based business, but not to bring the impact of the traffic or the people into the residential community. So, so does that make sense? So that's why it's it's written like that, like we don't want, I don't know, Domino's Pizza set up it in somebody's home and there you know, five cars parked out front to come buy the pizza. So that's why it says retail sales like that. I mean, I can work on language. I just want everybody to understand why it's drafted. Home occupations are typically drafted like this.
So what I think about right now, when I look at that and with the explanation you just gave us.
Yep.
The cake I bought for last year's Christmas party for the boards and the cookies that I'm bringing this year for the board party are bought by a girl that has a professional, she's a professional baker and runs it out of her home. She bakes out of her home. I go to her home and I pick them up in the springs and then I bring them to the party.
Okay, so sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. So look at A five, read that limiting language. I mean, I think that.
Five?
Yeah, A five.
Hold up, hold on a sec. We need to find that. Where is that?
Right above that section.
Page one oh seven. I can read it out loud if you guys want me to, which I hate to do, but I will.
Oh, yeah, okay, I. Yeah. So in a sense, it's the same if they're running a business out of their house and they have a um five parking spots for their customers, so they'll come in and shop in their house kind of thing. That's what, that's why she it says retail. So so an independent doesn't really pertain to retail, right? Even though she's selling out of her house or whatever, she would have to have customers coming in, parking out front, parking in the driveway, all that kind of stuff. So I mean, as long as it doesn't hit the independent seller who's you know, selling online or.
Homeschooling kids and trying to make an.
So there's not a constant flow of traffic.
Exactly. That's what that's what Ruth is talking about. As long as there's not constant.
In Gillette, there was a guy who had a gun store in his attached garage.
Nice.
And so then the neighborhood would always have cars there.
That would be a no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause there was cars on the driveway, there's cars on the street, there was cars in other people's driveways.
That would be even if he's like FFA and stuff.
And he was, he was. Yeah, he was an FFL dealer.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I agree, the language can be problematic.
Might want to look in my car for my wallet. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, Ruth, can we just work on the language of that? I mean.
Well.
Ju- just to protect um certain people, I mean.
I know, but I in my mind, it's so clear, I guess, cause I'm so history regulating it, but.
Well, I mean, if you think.
It's it's not primarily involve onsite retail sales.
Okay, so Ruth, would you say the retail is the key word? Retuck like, so you could say someone's selling Pampered Chef or cookies out of their baking out of their house. We could say that's not retail because of the traffic. Is that traffic flow? Is that what you're saying? I mean, what's the definite, I guess, what's the definition of retail?
I mean, we can look at a definition of retail, but retail is like you go to the grocery store and they're selling goods and you're paying tax on it.
But Pampered Chef would be, they have it in their house and someone's just coming to pick up the casserole dish.
Those are book sales.
Not if they go.
It's not retail.
Well, if they have a Pampered Chef party at their house, though.
It's all from a book and they don't have, they don't have the product in their house.
You don't do that anymore?
They don't do that anymore. It comes in when they order it.
But what about?
That used to be the fun part.
Cookies or cakes. I mean, that's a good example, cookies and cakes baking out of your kitchen.
That's fine, well.
It is, but.
What about the grandma? Cause I think my wife takes enough cookies to.
Oh, my God, we'd have to have Katie get a license.
But anyway, um, something like Grandma Gertie making pot holders and little hats and, you know, knitting four thousand things for craft shows. And then every now and then somebody stopping by. We don't want to cut Grandma Gertie's income.
No, not at all. I agree, but I'm just wondering if.
But the way she has it written is pretty clear.
Here, here.
It sounds clear to me, but.
Here's the definition. Retail, the cells of good to the pu- goods to the public in relatively small quantities for use for consumption rather than for resale.
Like if I was to sell you stamping up, you don't go buy it from me and then you don't turn around and sell it, make money on it. That's retail. It's like if I, when I order all of my supplies for my stamping, I can't sell it as retail. It's not, I don't have a retail store.
Okay. I can, I mean, I guess I don't. I'm for Kim, though, and trying to tell someone who's walking in and saying, and they're angry at their neighbor and trying to use this.
But they they call me and I explain to them that.
Yeah. We're just trying to call him. Kim, just look at him and say, what's it to you? Really?
Well, I'm I'm fine with it. I I've, people need to be able to do business out of their homes, though, to on some, you know.
What's it to you?
Keep your nose on your own face. Sorry. Just said that out loud. It wasn't.
We think that a lot.
I bet you do. So, okay, well, we can move on.
There you go, Ruth.
I'm trying to.
Yeah.
I'm trying to see what the requirement is to even pay sales tax.
Well, we've been told by the Department of Revenue, I've been told by Department of Revenue, that we have to we have to have vendors that are coming in for special events. We have to collect a sales tax license number if they're coming to the events and selling to the public. If they are selling to friends of family, which we we can't monitor that. We can't go around and question everybody. Are you a friend? Are you a family member of this person if they're selling out of their home, you know? But if they leave their home and they go to a public event to sell their items, they're now selling to the public and they have to be collecting sales tax on that. There they have not given us a specific dollar amount. That's between them and the state. But as far as selling to the public at a um, yeah, a public event, they have to have a sales, and that's on the front page of the sales tax um, website page for Department of Revenue.
I need a free coffee, coffee shop.
You open it, we're all come.
That's right.
Well, they have one up at the church. They have a really nice coffee shop inside an majestic view.
They do, it's.
Coffee too.
It's awesome.
I just go to Patty's. That's my coffee shop.
And it's all by donation.
Yeah. And they've.
It's all by donation, but they tell you how much you have to donate.
It's suggested donation amounts.
It's what?
Suggested.
Donation amounts by what you're buying.
I think if it's a donate, if it's not a coffee shop, they shouldn't have a suggested donation. When it opened up, it said we're selling coffee by donation and you donate. But you can't steal coffee and donate and say, well, this is how much you have to give for that cup. That's not the same thing. I'm sorry.
They don't do that, cause they got my my caramel cap thing that I get. It says four ninety-nine and I give them two bucks, cause that's what I can get it for at. And they don't care. And they're not gonna turn me away. Walk back in there. All I have is.
Funny is that you don't pay sales tax on food.
Right.
So like baking. So baking is just for whatever it's worth, is not taxable.
No.
They're not considered a business. But um anyway, okay, it's it's like splitting hairs.
Okay, next.
If somebody really got out of control and what their business was and caused an impacted traffic and the neighborhood, you're gonna re revoke their home occupation. You're gonna bring them in and cite them and say, you know, you can't, you know, have more than whatever, one car a day.
Kind of like when I had a drug dealer across the street from me. Every half house. New cars.
Um. So Ruth, how does it apply to the guy next door to Town Hall?
I don't, I I don't know what he does wrong.
The guy in the garage next to Town Hall, it's a residence. At one point, it was an insurance house, insurance company ran out of the house and an excavating company ran out of the garage. And the person there now um believes when they bought the house, the uh, use of a commercial label was transferred to him when he bought the house. According to code enforcement, um, the people that lived there prior are the ones that received the approval by the the town board to utilize that house in that garage as a commercial business. But that does not transfer to a buyer of the house. They have to come back to the town.
Yeah.
To the commission and ask for a review of whatever business they're wanting to run out of there to leave it classified as that. He's running a car repair business out of that garage. It's disturbing the peace um when he's working on those houses, I mean, on those cars because of how he rubs them up and the exhaust and the smoke and everything that goes along with it. Is that does that fall underneath that? Because he hasn't asked for a home occupation or business license or anything that matter. It's one I'm dealing with code enforcement on. Um. How does that apply to somebody like that? How do we?
Well, he he either needs a special review use permit and approval by the town or a home occupation permit.
Which we've never ever issued.
Well, we're gonna start.
Okay, good.
Kim, when you start making all these people with their new rules, can I come with you?
You don't, you don't need to come sit at Town Hall for a day. They all come in to complain. And scream and yell at us.
Oh.
Yeah, they do. They get mad and they come down and voice their opinion.
That's a nice way to say.
I do.
Yeah.
Let's move on.
Yeah.
Make sure their thoughts.
Let's fix him, though. Let's make him do what he's supposed to do. Okay, move on. Where are we? Lost.
Not sure.
Where are we?
Next. We're we're still on home occupations.
I'm.
And next is fences. And then accessory dwelling units. I think we're pretty good on accessory dwelling units. I'm gonna clean this language up, though, so it's more clear that you know, if you have a lot that's small, I mean, we can make it smaller, you guys. Say seventy-five hundred square feet, but. I understand that nobody wants to have units on top of units and they still have to comply with setbacks and height. So I don't think you're gonna see a lot of requests for ADUs. Cause Kiowa doesn't have a lot of large lots.
No.
That's true. I only have a couple, and I know one person that likes that idea, not me.
Of having ADUs.
Mm-hmm.
And here it says, number eleven, you can have a home occupation if you have an ADU. So you can't operate it as a separate business.
Oh, okay.
Well, if it's an actual mother-in-law house, I honestly wouldn't have any problem with that, but if it's somebody trying to pull shenanigans and all of a sudden that mother-in-law house became, you know, a rental, then I got a problem.
Or they split their property and sell it off.
Okay. After ADUs, we have non-conforming uses. This we did really early on.
Yeah.
This is very close to, we didn't change much in these sections. They are similar to what the town has right now. Um, special use permits, we were just talking about that. This gentleman uh next to the Town Hall may need an SRU permit. And those are revocable, just so you know. So somebody, SRUs and home occupations and ADUs can all be revoked for failure to comply with the terms of their approval. So that's the beauty of them, as long as we start doing them. We should change your name to manager Kim instead of administrator.
It's shorter.
Yeah.
Easier to spell, too, huh?
Okay, so here is what Kim was talking about is variances. The Planning and Zoning Commission has power to approve our variances.
Yeah, and we're we're trying to catch up. Hold on a second.
You're still. You're still.
It's back, sixteen.
Yeah, I'm page eighteen almost.
They don't really have page numbers, they just are going off the code numbers.
Can we get page first?
We will eventually. Yeah, she didn't send them with page number. Who invited you? Gosh.
Okay, so.
I forgot about it as I got them.
Where, I know, right, where are we at now?
Sixteen thirteen. Sixteen thirteen.
So Kim, this is a notice in the paper.
Keep going, it's way back.
For a variant, you with me?
Yeah, page are we on?
This is posting and notice to adjacent owners for a variance. Are you good with that?
No, I'm trying to find it. I don't think my documents were in order.
Should.
We didn't see how I carried him in the house.
Oh, well that's. That could really screw you because there's a lot of pages.
Yeah. What's this section, Ruth, sixteen something?
Sixteen thirteen, zero three zero.
Sixteen thirteen or sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm getting close. Got it. Ten days prior to the data hearing.
Did you find it, Ms. Kim?
Yeah, I'm on it now.
Hey.
Notice of public, published ten days prior to the data hearing and the newspaper general circulation within the town. So Ruth and I, I've been talking about this.
Really?
Yeah, all of our circulations are done, our publications are done in the Ranchland News. I've been feeling the reason they always went with Ranchland News is because at the time Ranchland News was the cheapest and I may, it may still be, I don't know. Um, but how many people read the newspaper?
Not very many.
Not anybody, no more.
Cuz they don't, they don't put it out on a regular timeframe like they used to.
No.
You may get Thursday's paper Sunday.
Pretty good Facebook, everybody reads Facebook.
Well, I mean, this is actually, I was telling Ruth earlier, this is a conversation we actually started with our old attorney. Um, and he has suggested at one point that maybe it would be more advantageous for the town to move to a different format of, of publication. Ruth, I, I think you were gonna check into the legality of moving it from the newspaper to a different format like our website or something like that.
In the old days, we used to post uh, school board minutes and things like that at the post office, at the library, you know, we didn't usually put them in the paper.
So, I mean, we put them all on our notification board out front, but our code and our charter seem to take it to a, a next level that require us to post them in a local newspaper. Both of which would have to be changed by ordinance if we choose to change it to something else, but then also Ruth doesn't state statute dictate how we need.
You're gonna have to always do the actual notice, like the mailing.
Why couldn't you do, cuz everything's uh, everything's online now, why couldn't you do it under the town's website? Do a posting.
Well, that's what we, we had to figure out because we feel like it's not practical and that it costs the town a ton of money.
Yeah. Money and if you wanna know what's going on, get online and look at the website.
That's what the school does.
And the school is, yeah, don't get there.
I just went to a county meeting today though, and they're, they're still posting their stuff on Ranchland News. Just that way.
Well, the newspapers are not out here reliable, there is no Denver paper delivered out here, it's all online, if you want it, that's the way you get it. So it doesn't make any sense to use the ranch land, cuz the ranch land has moved from Simmental to Lyman and like I said, a Thursday paper will come out Sunday.
And then it's not timely.
And the Elbert County Cryer over in Castle Rock, printed by the same group of people and if you find them, you're lucky, so.
It's all online, you can find all of those online.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could find it online at Ranchland News, which we've paid to put there, where you can find it online on our website and that, we, we already put it online on our website too, so we do it with the newspaper and we do it on the front page of our website.
And it actually goes faster on the website, because if you miss that Monday by four o'clock deadline, you're not getting in the paper that week.
Right.
So you really have to time things out carefully. And that is a problem, cuz if we're under time.
So.
Yeah, and that's where we were at the school museum, is we had to time everything out to make sure it got in the Ranchland News and make sure it got to the, you know, there was lots of. Lots of puzzle pieces.
But is it gonna be, reach enough people?
It's their job, we publish it, it's their job to go look at it.
Yep. I'm not sure if people really read them in the back anyway.
If we put it on the website, if we post it out front on our board.
And put it on the website.
And.
I say, because I've had the ordinance for the school museum out there for.
So it, I mean, when you post stuff like that, it doesn't necessarily have to reach a certain amount of people, does it, Ruth?
It just has to be publicly out there.
Has to be public notice.
Yes. So if someone went to look, we can say we posted it.
Didn't go look, well, then you should have looked.
Yeah.
Kinda thing.
Yeah, cuz.
Ain't stupid, go look.
The school museum's been out there for like two months now.
Yeah.
I think the post office is a good idea, that's.
Yeah, cuz they have their little bulletin.
Most of town doesn't use the post office.
Ranchland was free, right, Kim? But.
It is free, no.
Okay, they, they started charging for public notice.
Oh my Jesus, I guess they start to charge.
They charge to buy their paper now, but the Ranchland News is not free to, to even look at, you gotta buy it online or you gotta buy it in paper form and it costs a lot of money to put it, something in their paper now too.
So let's just not do that, let's take that out of there and just do it with, see if we could just approve it through town post office, website and poster board out front.
Let's, let's say the bare minimum in here though, what we can get, cuz you, anything else you do would be nice and icing, but you don't wanna get ourselves where maybe we miss a spot and then we're not compliant, so.
Online and out on our notification board, because if Sasha and I can't get to the post office.
Exactly. Right, which I haven't done this week. I will pile them.
Run faster for us.
Yeah, so I mean, as long as it's like, if we can post it on our website and put it on the board.
Right, say that one, we're doing our job.
And then if you get a chance, post it at the.
Right, exactly. But it's not, we wouldn't have it in the rule list, it would just be.
Cuz she's right, there are days you get out of your post office close.
Yeah, like it. Ten o'clock on Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right, moving on.
Okay, so what, you're directing staff to figure this out to avoid spending money on publication, that's what I hear you saying.
Yes.
Bingo.
Okay.
You got.
That's for everything, it's, it's all over the place, oh no.
Sorry.
That was a great job.
Yeah, it's okay.
We're keeping her awake.
I've been awake since three AM. Did you? Wish I had coffee.
The next, we're getting there, you guys. Um, next is our sign code, we really haven't changed this or made any uh, significant changes, so you can see by the text that it's what we've always had, so if anyone has something to say about what we need to change in the town, that'd be great.
We, we can't, we can't see your arm.
I have, I have something, this is, this is the constant stressor for me, okay? Cuz currently our sign says, no, our sign code says, no political signs, no um, I gotta find the exact verbiage in our code. Um, really, the only thing that you're allowed to put temporary signs up for right now are events. And you're only allowed to have the sign up for the time preceding the event, once the event's down, done, you're supposed to be going and removing them, okay? I've got, and I don't know how they do it, but we've got people that come down from Parker and Elizabeth and other surrounding areas, that's where I'm finding them, once I call the numbers and chew them out, they are coming on Thursdays cuz they know our office is not open on Fridays. And somehow they're using lift trucks to get to the top of the poles and bolted in signs. And then I either have to threaten them to report them to Core, because that is a, a, a state law, they cannot put anything in a utility pole or if I can't get a hold of them cuz they're refusing to answer the phone, Mendez is gonna figure out how he's gonna get to top that pole to unbolt that and get it down, I do not know how they do it, I do not know how they, they do it with, nobody catches them do it. But if I come back through town Thursday evening or on Fridays when we have events on the weekend, they're on the poles and I have to take them down Monday or I have to threaten them to have them down by Monday. So Elizabeth, what I'm getting to is Elizabeth has in their ordinances permits, they have to get a special permit to put those temporary signs up, there's certain places they could put them, they have little stickers they put on the back of those signs that say what dates they are allowed to have those up, they pay a fee per sign. They're only uh, allowed a certain number of signs. Um, and then if they violate any of that, they're not allowed to put them up again. So if we could put something to that effect, I don't want to block everybody from doing something, but um, we just can't let them do it willy-nilly, we're gonna end up looking like a town that's unkept and nobody cares about it, you know? And that's my big thing, once you start letting them just put them up wherever they wanna put them up, they're gonna keep doing it and they're not gonna come back and take them down and the people doing it right now are don't even live in our town.
Well, if we had a court and we could get their number and write them a summons and have them come to court and pay a fine, then quit that crap.
Don't know about that, unless we make the fine big enough.
Yeah.
Our problem that they need to, we need to allow them to do it so they're able to afford to feed their children and put a roof over their head. We're not allowing them to make a living, that's what I've been told by every single one of them.
You don't care.
I, I really don't care, but just something about.
Elizabeth, do they all have a sticker and then the town employees, when that date expires, they go take the signs and throw them in the trash?
Correct.
So we need to do something like that, so.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's adopt their sign policy thingy, just go get it.
Set us up with that, would you?
Sure.
Like a sign patrol unit?
Elizabeth's sign permit?
Don't say it yet, we gotta.
Temporary sign. On their website, Ruth.
Okay, I'll find it.
I saved it, Ruth.
Thank you. Let's move on, okay.
Okay, now we're on.
Canopy warning signs. Are we on?
With me for a second, Mike.
We went through special events. No, I think we're on this one, special events, Ruth.
Yep, you're on special events. Special event permits, so this should help us for.
Didn't they try that, didn't they used to say that if you were gonna use the park, you had to get a permit and pay it?
Supposed to do that now.
I know, but do they, has anybody come in and rented the park?
Yes.
Yes, I've had a few people, but then I've had other people who Mendez will come in on Monday and be like, the park's a wreck.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so. And it's supposed to, there's a certain number, like.
Twenty, over twenty-five.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah. Is it posted at the park though? Is it, is it posted to say, please see town regarding events? Uh, I do not believe so, is it, Kim?
Say that one more time?
Is it posted at the park that they are supposed to come get a permit? I don't think it is.
It used to be on.
It's not posted that they need it, it's not posted that they need it, but I, I would like to bring this up with regard to that too, because the, I came to this realization this past summer, when you are asking somebody to come to Town Hall to get a permit to rent the park. In my experience, when you go rent something at a park that is exclusively yours, it's usually a, an awning, a pavilion, something of that nature, and they're able to put up on there that this particular person has this rented for this time. We don't have those at our parks, so when we're charging somebody to rent the park or their event, how can they charge that when we're allowing everybody else to come into the park at the same time, there's no way to keep people out of the park.
And I did, we had a birthday party for my son and I did pay money and like if you don't get a table or you don't get and then the rest, there were rest, restrooms were supposed to be opened and they weren't and, I mean, there was a lot, yeah, I agree.
I don't think it's a very good process we have in place, it's very unfair, it's my opinion, and I don't think it's something we really should be utilizing until we have actual pavilions there that we could rent to that party to utilize just for them, to tell somebody that they're gonna pay us fifty bucks to rent the park and then they get there and there's three hundred other people there that didn't come to the office to pay fifty bucks to rent the park. It's, it's not a very good process, it's not, it's just not fair.
So basically, until we have something really, really cool to offer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why?
Yeah, cuz otherwise it should be like a structured, like concrete pad, you get two tables, you get an overhang, that's yours.
Yeah, there's no way to keep other people out of the park when somebody else is asked to use it and done it according to our code.
Right. I'm just gonna go play in the park, I mean, a lot of.
Playing in the park is different than having a family reunion in the park.
No, agreed, but I'm saying as a person in this town, if you wanna go play in the park in Austin, you can't, you know, the whole thing is reserved for whoever bought the, that's what I'm saying is like.
No. They rent to have a picnic, they rent to have. They don't rent the playground and the, everything else.
Right, so I, I mean, in that right now, there's no way to, we have no process in place to allow a personalized space for people who are coming and paying fifty bucks for a park from it, to have whatever event they're having there. Um, like the church will come, the church will come, every year they have vacation Bible school and they'll come pay their fifty bucks to have a day at the park for their vacation Bible school. I don't know why they've never said anything, I mean, this is a revelation, I came to just this last summer with other people that have asked to borrow it. Um, they take the kids over there and they play in the park. And if there's tables available when they get there, because we haven't reserved those tables for them, then they use those tables, if there's not, then they bring their own tables, what are they paying us fifty bucks for? Anybody could go to the park and let the kids run free and play, it doesn't make sense. Um, this summer I had somebody wanna rent the park and they had four people. Why am I charging them fifty bucks for four people to come sit at one picnic table and use a barbecue? And the rest of the park is full of other people who didn't come to the Town Hall and pay fifty bucks to sit at their picnic tables.
A single table.
Exactly, I agree with that, we should.
Exactly, I agree with that, we should.
That, I mean, there's, we can't do that. Now, the old guy parking stuff I see, but. To rent the park, you can't do.
Till you have some cool amenities.
Right, since we're putting something in writing here, though, should we put something to say? I don't know, like a place marker? For the time being.
I don't think it's any time pertinent that we're gonna get.
It won't be.
A park.
One guy, we had camping down there that ran his generator for four or five days.
We have no.
Well, and it's funny, cause you say no overnight parking at the park, so they park on the side by the tree park.
Yeah, and that's.
And then they're not at the park.
Then they're not at the park.
Enforcement doesn't come.
Because there's three deputies on shift for any given shift for eighteen hundred square miles, Ruth.
Yeah.
Care less about that car sitting on the side of the road, if somebody's sleeping.
Fifteen times a day, they don't care.
Yep.
So it's, it's useless.
Yeah, I say lose it alone for now until.
Figure out something else. We don't need that. Alright, move on.
The next thing is medical marijuana. The same. Provisions we've had before, wherein.
We said no.
You've essentially outzoned marijuana establishments in the town of Kiowa. And then the next thing is mobile vending. Which is like food trucks. Food vendors.
So again, Elizabeth has a mobile food truck vendor permit that we don't currently have. And I think that would be beneficial, because we do have mobile vendors that come down here and just park during the week. The lunch.
This provision now has that in it.
Okay.
Well, if you gave us all of us town board people, if it was at the town of Free Ice Cream.
Called gratuity, that's jailable.
Okay, never mind.
Oh my god.
No, I like free ice cream.
I'm all for permits for vendor trucks.
Me too, that is perfect.
Cause those guys bank. They make a lot of money.
We wanted to, and then we saw the price.
You won't go to Roses.
I like Roses.
Those are the nicest kids.
Are they?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we should have bought something. You can also get it at Patty Anzo, they sell that ice cream.
Oh, do they?
Just a way, okay, well.
So this. You might wanna read the provisions for the permit, but it is in there.
Oh, that's, I read that one.
Is there a permit required for short term?
In, all of it is.
Yeah, but it says long term.
For long term, if they come back every week, would that be?
Elizabeth's our food truck licenses are good for up to one year. Until December thirty first of each year.
Be a good idea to do.
That's Terry.
That's Terry. Say that again, Terry.
I said, I agree with Kim, I think that would be a good idea, especially like Chaotic Kitchen and Roses. They buy it for a year.
That's a good idea. That'd be long term.
So if somebody wants to come.
For the weekend.
One day.
But even, but even then, like if we have.
One day or fifty days.
But it's, it's a one year.
Right, but our special event permits, like when Forty Mile goes on. And we have people come to sell stuff and they get a permit, it's good for a year.
Okay, so everybody's just good for a year, and then.
Yep, and then you have to renew it.
Perfect.
But should we say permit required for mobile vending then? Take the long term out?
Well, long term would, most long terms are Roses. And Chaotic Kitchen, they come once a week.
But I'm saying someone, a mobile vendor could say, oh, this is set for long term and I don't intend to be long term, I just intend to be there for.
They buy it if, if they buy.
No, that's what I'm saying, should we take, does long term mobile vending imply?
So take out the words long term.
I think long term needs to come out.
Okay, well, read the definitions first, please.
Read the definitions. Underneath it.
No, it's above it.
Or above it, I mean. Back one page.
No, I was starting at the very top, mobile vending. Because like on the top, see, the, the top of the page. Oh, I'm on six.
You're on the wrong page.
Oh, okay, I'm on a different page.
What page are you guys on, cause my packet ended at fine. Ordinances.
Mobile vending.
Say that one more time, Sandy.
Um, at the very top, it says number five, but then right below it, it says mobile vending, it says article X one X, whatever that is.
Nineteen.
I don't do Romans.
I don't either.
I guess the thing is, like in throughout all of this, if we're only gonna have one license, should, shouldn't it all just say mobile vending? Not long term or short term or.
The only thing we offer is long term. If you want to spend the day, you have to pay the same price as long.
Yeah, but we should just call it mobile vending, shouldn't we?
Yeah.
And take long term, short term out.
He's gonna mobile vending permit?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise.
Kinda like the special event permit. It doesn't say long term or short term, it just says special event permit, it's good for a year.
Did you find us, Kim?
No, I'm just looking at ordinance in Elizabeth that they just passed this year and they. They specified theirs to mobile food trucks and push carts, so that nobody could turn around and say, well, mine's not a mobile food truck, I, I push a cart with food in it. That's how petty people get, I'm telling you.
I'm gonna pull my wagon around and sell ice cream bars.
Call you back, I'm animating.
How about that, Kim?
If I say that again, all her was Rick.
I'm gonna pull my wagon around with my horse and it's just a mobile. Push cart, it's on good.
Throw a case of water in there, stand at the corner, Albert eighty six and sell water out of it.
Mobile vending or cart or push cart or something to that effect.
Or how about except term?
Have an opinion.
Like, let's just use what Elizabeth says then.
Hey, honey.
Bye, honey.
Oh my god, what you guys.
What do you think, Kim, if we just adopt what it says for Elizabeth?
It's too sad for me to know.
Okay.
I sent it to you, Ruth, I've sent both of them to you, Ruth, just so you can read them and see what you think about it.
Oh, wait, down at number six, it says. Mobile vendor vehicle means it's truck, trailer, push cart, wagon.
Oh, it's already in there, Kim. Your definitions.
I'm still trying to find the right page, I have so many pages here.
On a golf course? We don't have one of them. Couldn't have, Ruth would be there every day with like one.
It's truck, trailer, push cart, oh yeah.
All of it, let's move on.
Right there, cool.
So can we, we are good. Our definitions include the push carts or anything, so.
We still have location, extent, review and development of public facilities. Lines at the top of the page.
There you go.
That's for a wrap.
Yes.
Almost done. Three more pages.
For streets, roads, parks, public ways, open space. Public buildings and structures. And utilities. So just require, it sets forth requirements for the government or utility company to comply. Makes it easier for them to get through the process.
Perfect.
The next is building permits, this is just simply saying. You know, you have to comply with their zoning code in order to get a building permit and if you fail to. Comply, then we can revoke your permit. And. I think that's it.
It is.
We're almost done.
Yeah, I have a question. If somewhere in here, are we going to uh put our fee schedule?
Our fee schedule will never be in ordinance.
No.
Because we want the ability to always change it.
Yeah. Like, if you come in, you're gonna get.
So.
I agree.
We will have that separate from. Our code book.
It's adopted as a resolution.
Okay, that's the word I wanted to hear, alright.
Earlier this year, Rick, remember, we moved it to resolutions so we could change it as needed?
Yeah.
As needed.
Kimberly, it's snowing outside, did you know that?
You know, I, it took me over an hour to get home and I had to drive fifteen miles an hour all the way here. Four seventeen. So I don't need, wanna know what it looks like outside now.
Call the phone, did you call the phone code there or whatever, phone tree?
Phone tree, for what?
For the plowboys.
Those plowboys are gonna be out, I don't worry about those plowboys anymore, they're pro cops. They'll be there.
Alright.
I called to adjourn this meeting on.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
December thirteenth at seven twenty one PM. Okay.
After you go, see you guys, Merry Christmas.
Good night, everybody.
We'll be here next Wednesday, Rick, so it's before Christmas, you guys see us one more time.
We have to see everybody Saturday, tomorrow for the party.
That's right.
I'm trying to skip tomorrow, my youngest will be sixteen.
Go get his license, he's your best kid. He's your best kid.
Good night, all.
Hi, y'all.
Take care.
Hi, Ruth, good God almighty.
Whenever I think it's gonna be simple, it's not, so funny.
No, I know, I'm like, good god, I should have just kept my mouth shut. Alright, sweetie, I'll talk to you tomorrow, you okay?
Yep. I'll talk to you.
Okay, bye.